Okay, I'd like to call the October meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees to order at seven forty-eight?
Six forty.
Or six, six forty-nine. All right. And if we'll all stand, we'll do collective release. Is why I didn't say.
Okay.
I am proud to be here to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you want to do road talk, Carrie?
Yes, President Jennifer Schultz here, Vice President Richard McGlue.
Here.
Pressured by the new here and trustees Eric Shotwell.
Here.
And Carrie Francis here, Secretary Karen Wenz is absent, excused, Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Rosie Rose and Arrow, both independents.
Okay. Does anybody want to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to suggest or offer a adjustment. I'd like to move my president's report to the end.
Okay.
We can motion with the change of.
Was that the end of the officers' reports or the end of the entire?
End of the.
Meeting.
Meeting.
Okay, before we adjourn?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Okay. That's how I interpreted. Okay, good. So I need a second still.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I'm.
Okay, we have two people in our public tonight. And two new people that are on our voters. I don't know.
No.
Ballot, they're on the ballot. Becky and Bill, I don't recall your last names. Nap?
Becky Nap.
Becky Nap and Bill?
Yeah, William Moffer.
Well, you go by William?
Well, you know.
Okay, alrighty, so do you all have a statement or anything, or you get three minutes if you want it? No?
No.
Say, vote up, vote, vote early, or just get in there and vote, right? Okay. Okay, we don't have any presentations this evening. And now we need an approval of the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the White Lake Township Library Board of Trustees from September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Eric's a second.
So I note that the agenda approval was not.
But we didn't vote on it, did we? Did I vote? Did we vote?
Did we vote?
We did vote.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I see what you're talking about, Rich. What needs a name there?
So if, so I was, we had a first and a second, and was open for discussion that there's a. The approval of the agenda.
It doesn't say.
Made by Eric and seconded by period and for approval of the minutes.
It's Eric and Rich. I'm sorry, I'd not.
No, it was Eric, it had been Eric and Gwen.
So in the, in the minutes.
In this?
In the, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the real time meeting we're doing right now.
So I, I, yeah, I missed it. I apologize because I actually looked through it and then.
And I just noticed it, so.
It's, it's under the approval of agenda and the approval of the minutes, both.
Okay. Okay, yes, I am, and we're inserting Gwen on the second by. Do you see that, Carrie?
Absolutely.
Okay.
My apologies.
And now, now we're all on the same page.
While you learn, yes, yes.
Okay.
That's just fine.
Super. Everything else is fine, though. And in today's meeting, Gwen made the motion and Eric seconded.
Other way around. Oh, no, you're right. Sorry, you're right.
I second.
Okay, I have had four strokes, but I thought I was on top of things tonight. All right, so that brings us to our officers' reports.
Okay, we have, we have to vote, yes.
Okay. So, all in favor?
All right.
Four yes votes. Okay.
And Carrie, you're gonna update last month's minutes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It's not always as confusing, guys, just so you know.
Some of it's total chaos.
Um, okay.
This isn't on this.
The old one?
Yeah, we're also missing, we probably all should have read it before we came. We are missing, do you have last, do you have August minutes, April?
On me right now, or on screen here? When they need to.
We don't have the treasurer's report on here.
Oh, for September?
For September.
For September, there's no treasurer's report listed. So.
We would have had a vote, Carrie.
Yeah, because we have to, and I don't remember exactly what, how we term that, so can you?
I've seen that in another version.
It has to be in every month because we actually vote on it.
Yeah, I recall.
Like, we didn't, we didn't move money to pay bills.
No, it's the treasurer's report to accept the accounts payable.
Yeah, let me see if I can get it through. I can work with Carrie, too.
Yeah, I can get it.
But we need to have it put in there related to.
I have my handwritten notes, but they're at home on my freezer.
So, suggestion to not accept the.
Yes.
We, I'm, we're back next, next month.
Next month, okay.
Um, hang on. I need to actually bring up the September, the August packet so I can make sure that I say this right for our minutes.
Do we do this after the meeting since we're just not going to?
No, I have to be able to say the minutes for this month.
Oh, sorry.
No, I have to look at it to make sure I say it correctly so that we don't have to correct that next month, right?
Okay.
And we'll do the.
All right.
The minutes for the.
October ninth one.
October ninth.
Next month.
Next month.
So Carrie, under the treasurer's report, it usually says who presented the, and if you go back and look at a previous one, so like I wasn't here in July, so it said Carrie Francis presented the twenty, July twenty twenty-four. Financial statements and bills, motion to accept the bills for payment as presented. So we say the same thing every time.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I do that.
I think last month you.
I did.
You, you, yeah, you, you made the motion, I believe I seconded.
I think that's correct.
And I honestly didn't have a template for the budget meeting, so I was modifying, so that could be where that paragraph got misplaced, but I'll certainly get to the bottom of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so in the November meeting, we'll approve the October minutes. And the September minutes.
And, and the October ninth minutes.
Oh, that's not in here?
No.
Okay. All right. So, the month of meeting.
Yeah, we need that.
And the budget.
The, the budget, yeah.
Yeah, those will be separate.
Mark hearing.
No, no, it's just a newbie in this job, so.
Yes.
I will get control of it.
Okay.
We give the meeting minutes for September and October.
Yeah, and the budget meeting on the ninth. There'll be three sets of minutes.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have anything special on the president's report other than saying thank you to Rich for his service. Not that it's, not that you're not special. But anyway, thank you again.
I defer.
And, and Rich deferred, so we're at the secretary's report and our secretary's not here.
Correct.
So that would bring us to the treasurer's report.
Okay, so I'm ready.
Okay, Gwen's gonna present the bills for payment.
Yes, so. Everybody's looked at this.
Yes.
I'm gonna actually talk about what we're gonna do with CDs in the finance report, okay?
Okay.
So, but in your, in your byhand packet, there are all the, this was updated, it says. So it says nine thirty, twenty twenty-four, but we had a maturity date on a Genesis one, well, he does have it. And, um, what's, Joe does have it highlighted, so that was the one big change that we, that we did for, for September. So the principal balance of that hundred and forty thousand rolled into a new CD, and we took the interest and deposit that in Blackstar.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll talk about that, and then if anybody else has any questions about, you know, the prepaid expenses or the accounts payable.
Did not have, I didn't see anything on it.
Okay.
I did not either. When I was signing checks, I didn't notice anything.
Okay. Um, actually, I have one thing I'm gonna add since it's very minor, our AP aging. What's the thirty dollars, John?
Oh, I had a book that I paid for.
Yeah.
That I found.
Okay.
So I brought it back and I got reimbursed for the.
Did you cash the check?
Not yet, I mean, I just got it.
Oh, okay.
Let me just sign that.
Yeah, I just signed it a week ago.
Yeah, I reissued it.
That's why it was.
Okay, that's why it's still saying aging.
Because you were a town.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm looking at this, I'm like, is there a thirty dollar thing for Jennifer that's ninety days old?
It was on succintance.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just picking it.
No, no problem.
Okay, so. If there are no further questions or anybody has any questions on the check detail for September. Um, would I say this correctly? And I am making a motion to accept the bills for September for payment as presented.
Yep.
Do you have a question?
So, yeah. In point of fact, these are bills that were paid over lunch, about a month ago.
Yes, this is on September third, yes.
So we're not approving for them to be paid, it's.
This is the AP aging. What we said, what we, we've always said is a motion to accept the bills for payments presented.
We've had this discussion before.
Yeah, no, I know.
Which it doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, Rich, that we're, that we're saying present, you know, bills for payment when we've already made the payment.
Exactly, and that's.
And I agree with you, and we probably should look at a different way to say it, but as long as I've been on the board, I've been told every month, this is the way we, this is the way we present this, the bills for payment.
So you could say it.
You could say we're approving the bills that were paid.
Yeah, we're accepting the, the. Packet as presented, the, the.
The financial packet as presented? Yeah. Okay.
Which approves that, you know, the things that we, that we spent were.
So.
And I thought this would be a short meeting.
Well, this is Rich's last meeting.
I know. It's been bugging him for ten years, I'm sure.
Um.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
It took me a couple of years to notice.
Hang on, I'm writing something out. Okay. I'm going to say. I make a motion to accept a September twenty twenty-four financial statement and bills that have been processed.
Sure.
That's probably not the way I want to say it, but I'm sure.
It'll go tonight.
I'm just saying, accept the September twenty twenty-four statement and bills, financial statement and bills, and just end it there.
Okay.
If that's okay, Carrie.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to accept the September twenty twenty-four financial statement and bills. Got it.
Okay, I need a second.
Thanks.
Rich, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay.
Four high votes. Till April?
Okay, I'm gonna start by going through the to share folder first. It was, it's actually quite full this month, so I'll just give you a heads up on some of the things that are in that. We received a nice thank you card from the White Lake Historical Society about our involvement with the Ethis Farm Festival Craft Show. I thought that was very nice. We received a thank you card from a patron who is moving to Livonia and just wants to take the time to thank us for helping them find things and that Maria was always so friendly, so that was nice, too. We received a suggestion when we had our fabric back picture backdrop, why is the fabric, why is the fabric backdrop running the wrong way? Hard to do mortar and lay bricks vertically. I don't know, I've seen it, but thank you. Um, Emily has graduated from Leadership Academy, so I greeted her.
Yes, big kudos to Emily.
Leadership, as Amy well knows, Amy and I both know, Leadership Academy is very helpful. Um, we also received a thank you and, again, from our Jane Retrosen Agency. And because Amy is so wonderful to share what she does with them, wanna speak a little bit about that again?
There's a publisher who I contacted because we had a spring book that was committed to treatment and, which she handled, and I reached out and she really published it, I bought it from a reputable vendor, it was, so they've had no names worked back and forth. To us that have not been released yet or like they're fake authors, and so they, that's another one, so I should, you know, I'm gonna show that we truly are adding them, so it was a, a known author I added, took a picture and sent it off, and they said, hey, librarians, libraries are rock stars.
Oh, wonderful.
So there, and they keep reaching out, hey, can I ask you how libraries work, you know, what makes you buy that, they've been, really, this is the fourth or fifth, you know, donation they made just out of blue.
So they're not just Michigan authors, they're, it's nationwide?
It's a publishing agency in New York City.
Okay.
And they, um, it's the author that they sent us a free copy of, and I am bringing it to collection. It was a big author.
Oh, Timmy Ho. Yeah, Timmy Ho.
They've been reaching out, was just sending free books for the library.
Oh, good.
Wow.
Uh, as you know, we are continuing to collect for the Animal Shelter and Pet Adoption Center, so a nice thank you from them. Uh, and then when Emily was at Michigan Library Association last week, uh, of course, the vendor area had. AE as well as McCarthy Smith, and we are very vibrantly.
Oh, there they.
In their brochures throughout, and you can take a look at that, as well as they had a big pull-up that showed our building, so. Quite, quite the design. I'm gonna pass that along.
Thank you.
At your leisure. So director's report, we've been quite busy. We actually now officially have, were invited and went over to the neighborhoods of White Lake over there for their Harvest Festival, and they're looking to do some more partnerships with us in the future. I've been talking with Springline Construction about the related drive and what's going on there. They have a few things that they're gonna have to fix, including another area of our sprinkler. It looks like they probably, I'm, I'm assuming clamped it off, uh, because you could see part of it sticking out of the ground, and it wasn't squirting water, which was good. Uh, but that, they assured me will all be fixed as well as landscaping, so landscaping will be, grass will be put down. As you can see, some of the areas are already across the street on that side are being, you see the straw and all of that going on. Board, you have been busy this month. Gwen attended the Highland White Lakes Business Association Coffee Networking at the Huron Valley State Fair, and Eric and Rich both attended the Friends Annual Membership Meeting, so thank you to, to all of you. It's really nice when you guys can get out there and get to the public and talk to them about our services.
Okay. Um, and people were very, very interested in being able to use this room.
That's it, yeah, and that's exactly my point of why I created that little coffee talk.
I didn't get it, you know.
They talk about doing off hour, uh, message or during the day.
We only had, there was probably only forty people there, so we have very limited amount of time, so I pushed that, you know, we have meeting rooms, and then also that we had just had that financial group come in and do that, that, it was taxes and retirement.
Right.
And so some of the financial institutions were very, very interested in being able to have an opportunity to come in here and teach a class.
Which it did send that.
I just have a, a question to the rest of the members. How do you feel about them using a picture of our building to advertise their event? Are you cool with that?
They, they actually should, are supposed to ask us.
Well, yeah, and I was, I thought, well, does that make people think that we're sponsoring it anyway? And so that was my only concern. It's not the first time it's, they've done that.
I think they've done it for quite a long time, so I don't know what's, because I, I can remember before I came here, I've seen that in between.
I know, and I think that every time I see it, it's like, well, I hope people don't think that we're sponsoring it, because we're not.
I don't think so. If librarians walking around, they're seeing vendors, it's usually, they're just proud the fact that your library's being seen there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see that, too, so I, I was just curious if anybody else had a thought about that.
Librarians and directors, it's usually, I'm like, oh, I need to visit there, I should visit there because I like what I see, so it's.
Okay.
Yeah. That's just from my perspective.
That was it, I just wondered if anybody else had concern. And I wouldn't say it's a.
Well, I just know, Eric, you guys probably might be on the same page. I just know that anything that I, in my previous life, what we used to do is anything that was sort of belonged to us, if it was publicized at all, it needed to be, we just needed to give an approval before it was published.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what approval were.
So.
I don't know if there was.
Well, maybe it was.
Thank you, Amy.
Many years ago, maybe.
No, but when people, you know, display our library in something that they're going up in the public with, they really just need to have. Or if they're putting on a brochure because they're using our room, right? We want them to use it.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with using it, publicizing it, it's great, public sector libraries, but it might be that we're aware of, just that there is a chance that could be something that we don't approve of.
Right.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because it is approved to use for social media when, as an example, when you see those investments.
Right.
They show the different libraries that it's at, and we're one of them, and so, yes, that's, yeah, they were allowed to use our.
Okay.
Front of our building.
Okay.
Um, okay, so. Engagement is going well under marketing. We received a nice five-star Google review, uh, which I thought was a nice one. Yes, 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 to this place. Uh, the adult programs are wonderful, so that was, that was really nice to see. Um, director connections, I attended the State of the Lakes event, the, the Lakes Area Chamber that they've put on every year, uh, which is a good event. You. You learn a lot about what's going on in our local communities, um, and I do have to say this time, uh, White Lake really shined with what we, with what's going on with the new, the new build and all of that that's gonna be happening. And, um, as well as, um. You know, they talked about, they mentioned the library, and so as part of that, so that's kind of nice that, um, the library gets recognized. Um, I also attended the Highland White Lakes Business Association Nonprofit Network Meeting at Open Door Outreach Life Skills Resource Center. It's a nice new resource center that they have there. Uh, lots of, lots going on in facilities, so we're getting a lot done. Our new facilities, gentleman David, updated the caulking and the women's restroom sinks, which was not, kept coming off.
So he did that himself?
Yes.
Fabulous.
Um, and we now have the proper caulk on there, so it's looking good. Our new high-top tables have been put together, uh, and were recently used at our Friends Mystery Dinner Program successfully. Our sliding glass lock door, uh, the one right out here, uh, that, the one going into the library, the lock on that was backwards. And David was able to fix that so that it's, the lock was, the key lock was on this side, which otherwise patrons could just turn it and walk right in. Um, and then we're working with Goyette to fix our current heating boiler issue, so luckily we've got heat right now because last week we didn't, and we got it just in time for the heat wave to come through. Uh, but still working on a few, waiting on a few parts for that. Friends hosted a highly successful mystery dinner theater program. Uh, that was wonderful. What a wonderful event. Can't say enough about that. Um, that was great.
And that sold out, too.
Yes, it sold out. That is correct.
Very quickly.
Yep, uh, Friends also attended the Fisk Farm Trunk or Treat, which has over seven hundred attendees, uh, and many positive comments from, uh, people going through about the library, uh, that they had been here, they're, they love the library, and so that was very positive as well. We celebrate this week National Friends of the Library Week, so I just wanted to give another shout out to them for all that they do, uh, and also, uh, their annual meeting, which they just hosted, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank, um, Jerry Harrington for her service, uh, to the Friends and to the library. She has done a phenomenal job, her and Roger, and we're very thankful for what they've done for this library and for just their kindness and just seeing their.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, just been phenomenal, so it's, it's just been wonderful. And I also want to take a moment to also thank Carol Tomasunas and Mike Brayden for their service on the Friends exec board. Both are stepping down, um, but will still be very much heavily involved in the Friends, so, um, we will be getting a few new people on the Friends Board, exec board, including Stephanie Mercier for, as treasurer, and Grace Metifer and Beth Lanthier as trustees. So that will be a new, starting in January, a new group.
Is Gwen still on the board then?
Yes, Gwen, Karen and Linda will still be on the board. Um, gifts and memorials, uh, as we said, we got a new copy of that forthcoming book from that agency, and again, we donated, our patrons donated about ninety-nine items to that animal shelter.
Nice.
We have a new substitute librarian, Steve Polizzi. Uh, Steve teaches, uh, English at Shrine Catholic High School and has subbed at the Novi Public Library for twelve years, so.
So if he's teaching.
Yeah, he's able to, he is able to get here, um, for a five to eight shift.
Okay, I wonder how that was working.
Yep, and eventually Saturdays as well. Um, he's, he's very good. I worked with him for a long time, um, at Novi.
Great.
Um, the scrapbook event was a great success, so a big thank you to Amy for putting that on. Uh, attendees asked when the next one was planned, so we kinda have to, gonna have to get that one going.
That's my crocheting.
Mm-hmm. Uh, we hosted the White Lake Fire Department for two fire safety classes, uh, and they also worked with us on our recent fire Joel for staff. Um, we'd like to stay up to date on our safety. We also, and this does say in here that we contacted the police department, but the police were actually just out, I think it was today that they were out for their, um, storytimes here, so we've had the fire and the police out for fun for you, the storytime for the kids. Emily spent a day at Lakeland High School, um, seeing all of the high school English classes. Um, she met almost every single freshman. That was quite a day. She was a bit tired after that one. Um, and then we provided our first sensory storytime, uh, for teens and adults, which also did include. That come each week. Um, I was very happy that that was done, and I'm very thankful. Stephanie is the one who designed and planned that, um, and I'm very happy that that was done. That's, uh, very important to me. I, I really, I'm, I'm happy to see that continue. Uh, staff anniversaries a lot, so, uh, congratulations to Sarah and Chelsea and Annette and Patricia and Kathy. Um, without their service, uh, we just wouldn't be the staff that we are. They are just wonderful and, and very happy, positive people.
Yep.
Um, we launched the laser engraver in the ideal lab, and I just have to tell this little vignette today because I walked in there, I heard the, the, the laser engraver going, and so I just was curious what was being printed, and I'm not gonna tell you because that would probably ruin the surprise, um, but. Um, but, um, there were three pieces of technology going at one time. Yeah, so Maria was working on the laser engraver, and then we had a young man, I'm going to say somewhere in his early twenties, and he was scanning, um, he was scanning, I think it was something like his camera with the three D scanner in order to make a new cover, a larger type of cover for it, and then he was going to print it, re-print it. So three pieces of a technology and that thing going at once, and if they painted the other stripe on it today, our vendor was sent to paint the other stripe, so.
Yeah, I checked, I snuck, I meant to ask you guys if you saw it. It's just a mirror image of one that's there on the thing, so we'll have tiles on both sides of the room.
And that's the next phase. The tiles are four to six weeks out, so, um, that would be the next.
That's exciting.
Is it quieter with the extra stuff?
I didn't notice that. Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to mention that, um, you talked about, you know, having a White Lake Police Department here, but I also wanted to bring in the Friends Group because they were able to get an actual real-life police officer here for
Yes.
the mystery dinner, and he was so enthusiastic and he was so wonderful, so, you know, great. Wonderful.
Just wonderful.
Another connection with our local police department.
Yeah. We, we truly appreciate our connection with them. They are just fantastic. Um, okay, stats are looking pretty good. We were down a little bit fast this month in circulation, however, um, that's not, uh, that's kind of untrend actually. But yeah, you're right, the highest September so far. Yep, up on new card registrations, which September is library card signup month. Door count slightly down, but on trend. You have to figure out a new way to do this. Slightly down on public computer stations and wifi. Again, with wifi. And questions? Overdrive was up.
It's always up.
Yeah, it is a heavy, heavy used product, that's for sure. Hopefully had a slight down, but in range. And curbside, um, down a little bit, we had, uh, in August, a run on the.
So say, why do we have such a, uh, like a hundred more than?
Yeah, there was a run on, uh, COVID test kits last month in August.
Oh, okay.
Makes sense.
Like, yes.
Why? There was such a run that the, um, we received them, um, through a part, a library partnership, and they, uh, actually are out. Uh, and so they're expecting their shipment in November. Uh, we still have some, um, but we'll see how that goes. So, otherwise than that, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, April.
Yep.
Thank you.
So that moves us to committee reports, and finance committee is first up. Okay, so. For finance committee, we met twice this month because we wanted to make sure that we were ready to approve the, um, October budget, and, um, again, thank you, April. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And it's wonderful that it's approved, um, and it's not even the end of the month. We have a CD, we have a couple CDs, different CDs that are coming up. So, um, we have a CD coming in November, and it's our, um, CD at Chase, and it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars right now. Um, the interest on it, when it closes, um, eleven, twelve is going to be, we're estimating seventy-eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So Chase, um, we want to keep the money, and we want to keep enough money there that we don't have to pay any finance fees, um, um, service fees at Chase. We also want enough money i- it to be in there if, you know, something terrible happened at Flagstar, we'd be able to handle, um, bare minimum bills for about three months. So during, in our finance committee, we're recommending that because Chase also has the lowest CD interest rates, that we're going to, and rather than renew that two hundred and twenty-five thousand, we're thinking about putting in, um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand into Chase from that's current CD, taking a hundred thousand, uh, and then taking the interest out and putting it in Flagstar, and taking the other remaining hundred thousand and then opening a new account, um, at Vibe Credit Union. And, um, I can check again at the moment because I haven't checked in the last few days, but the, um, last month, last week when we did this, the interest rate at, um, Flagstar was three point two five percent for twelve months, and Vibe was four point six two percent for twelve months. So it's, it's quite a bit of a difference. Um, and we thought we would just take advantage of interest rates as high as they are as long as we could, so, um, let me check. I want to, I want to, before we vote on this, I actually want to look at the rates a- again. Just one moment. So, let's see. At a hundred thousand dollars, they're actually up. Um, oh, this, I'm sorry, that's three months. Twelve month is three point two five percent still at Chase. And and I'm going to verify Vibe as well. So we have not, we do not have an account with Vibe today, but we have, they've come in and partnered with us. Um, and so we thought that we would, um, and they're local. They're in White, they're in Watford, they're not in, um, in White Lake. But we thought we would partner, well, you know, we would, we would take advantage of that partnership and probably see more. Let's see, and Vibe. Vibe has actually gone down. Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, Vibe has gone down. Their twelve month is at, um, oh, that's what we did. That's what was different here. Um, we thought, if we can do an eleven month, and I called them on this. Um, so at a hundred thousand dollars, um, their six to eleven month is four point six two. If we did the twelve to seventeen month, it's only four point zero four. So we thought we'd be doing eleven month. So of a hundred thousand dollars, so that would give us another bank that we are dealing with, which is tend to be a lot, but, you know, right now we're sort of shopping around for the best interest rates.
Okay.
So, anybody have any comment about what we think we're going to do for November?
As long as we've got enough to, you know, hit budget, um, and especially eleven months versus twelve, you know, it's, we're, this is the time of year where we're pulling from, you know, the savings of both.
But we, but we're actually not this year.
So, yeah, so we're, because we planned it out.
Yes.
There, so it's the same thing, so, you know, as long as, as long as we have that plan in place.
We do, and, um, do you know what the, what our, um, balance is right now? Um, on the checking?
I was trying to see if I could get into it on this computer.
Because we, um,
Last I checked, checked, it was in the five hundred thousand range.
Right. So we have plenty to get through, really, um, November and half of December, and then we'll see some tax money coming in. Um, but we felt like we were in a really, we, we don't need to take any money out to meet the end of the year at all. So this is why we thought, um, and then I think, but I think like the Genesee one that we did, we only did a seven month for Genesee last month because it was a better rate. Um, and we're actually looking at doing that again on the next one in December, because their seven month is such a much better rate. So, um, so I have, you know, the finance committee talked about what we're going to do in November, December. We have two, um, CDs coming due. The Genesis one is at a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine. Um, the interest is going to be sixty-one hundred dollars. Um, actually, the interest right now is sixty-one hundred dollars. Interest is going to be like eighty-one hundred and fifty dollars by the time that it, um, it is mature on December sixth, so we're thinking about, because we're trying to stay under that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark, um, with it, you know, for FDIC insurance. If we just did a rollover of that, um, hundred and eight that's there today, um, plus that eight that's going to be a hundred and sixteen thousand, we already have the other hundred and fifty thousand dollar CD. So we'd be over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC. So our thought was that we would, um, do a seven-month CD, and there's our four point six five right now, um, at just a hundred thousand, and the rest of it would go to Flagstar. The, the interest and because we kept rolling over the interest before, so it'll be about sixteen thousand dollars that's going to go to Flagstar. And then finally, we have a Flagstar, um, CD due in December ninth as well. Yeah, and Rich has got that document open um, in the financials, um, packet. The Flagstar, there's a two hundred and four thousand dollar plus the interest of a ten thousand, three eighty-nine. We're suggesting to roll over that entire amount, and it'll be almost two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and I, we're going to do what, uh, we're going to roll that one over into Flagstar, and we didn't actually decide on a date. Because we're going to use whatever the best interest rate is between, um, six-month and, and twelve-month CDs. Yeah, I don't have Flagstar's rates just back. So before I make any motions to anybody, any questions?
With volatility right now. Those rates really vary. You, you may want to make a hedge, hedge to if that, you know, Flagstar rates greater, but somebody else's got a better rate. You may want to make a motion.
But where would we go for that better rate? So, because we're, we're, we've got money at, um, Lakes, right? And the, the credit unions that we used in, in Chase that we use today, Chase, we know is, it doesn't have the best rate. The other credit unions, if we took the, like, that two hundred and four thousand dollars out of Chase and put it in those other credit unions, we're not meeting our F, we're over FDIC. Um, and leaving things at Chase, because they consider us a, um, government institution, we can have five hundred thousand dollars in Chase, where the credit unions consider us as a small business. So that's why we were thought, I thought, where else, you know, unless we opened another credit union, but, um, Chase right, I mean, Flagstar right now, I think that the, the government rates are a little bit better than this, and, um, their seven month is four point six five, and their thirteen month is four point three five. So I apologize that I didn't get a rate from them today before I came in here, and I should have.
Well, it's, the rate will change by the time it's.
In December, it will change, and I look forward to actually go down.
Right.
I do look forward to go down.
Well, we don't have to make a motion on December.
We don't have to make a motion on, on December if we don't want to, um.
I wouldn't, just because rates are changing. That's just.
But we do have to make a decision, and we have to have quorum in November to make sure, and if not, then these will. So what did you do in the past, Rich, if you had a CD coming due and, um, you didn't have quorum?
We didn't, uh, we only had like one CD.
Oh.
And or, or we just had, you know, one or two at a time.
I do, it seems to me like if we didn't have a quorum, we would still do financial issues because you have to do the financial issues when you have to. We would pay the bills, we would do that stuff, and we would only do it with three votes.
We could sign the checks, basically.
Which we can do. To keep the doors open, but.
Yeah.
When a CD comes to, I mean, to me, it's the same kind of thing. You got to act on the CD when it comes to.
Because if we don't, they just automatically roll them over. Flagstar and Chase will automatically roll the, the world's CD over.
For another for the same period.
Um, we can tell them a different period if we want, but if we, if we wanted to take, like, Flagstar and Chase, um, if, and actually Genesis will do the same thing, if we don't take the interest out, they just, they'll take the entire thing and roll it over our, but we still, we'd have to tell them what the length of, um, terms would be. And if we didn't have a meeting, that's why I've been presenting these two months in advance, is so that if for some reason we didn't approve them the first time around, or we decided that we wanted to change it the next month, you know, we had that option, so we actually had something that we voted on.
You could set the rollover now to the, to the default or to the.
Okay, and that's what we're planning on doing is rolling the, the December ninth one over at Flagstar.
So you can make a motion today to set the default to the what we're talking about today, and then you can next month, if it makes sense to say, wait a minute, that we're going to do this. And say that wouldn't be in, it wouldn't be, if, if the second one would override the first, it wouldn't be a reflection for it.
Okay.
We'd have a fallback then, right?
Yeah, yeah, so if all things stay equal, we're set, if all things, if things change dramatically. I mean, we've been pretty, this last year, things have been have gotten more chaotic.
Yes.
But as time's going on, but earlier, you know, it was pretty much the rates today were going to be the rates tomorrow.
Right, and they have, they, they've dropped, uh, most of them have dropped at least a point.
Yeah, so that may continue or may maybe they always could take a left turn.
Okay, any other comments? Because if there's not, I'm going to make a motion on all, um, three of these CDs.
You're going to make one motion or you want to make three?
I'm going to make three separate motions. Actually, it's going to be four because they're going to include five. So it's going to be four motions, okay. Um, so my first motion is for the Chase two hundred and twenty-five thousand CD maturing in November. We will, the board will put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into a new twelve-month Chase CD. And a hundred thousand dollars remaining will I might have to think about how I want to say this, because we don't have the vibe account yet. So a hundred thousand dollars will go to a new CD at Vibe Credit Union at eleven months. My next, okay, that, so that's motion number one.
I'm sorry.
My second motion, and may, might, might have been, should have been the first, my second motion.
Can we vote on that motion?
Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a quick question? So
Yes.
The Chase CD for two twenty-five, what was your action on that?
There's, actually, there's three actions. I missed one. So the motion is to.
The interest goes where?
Uh, yeah, the mo- the motion is to create a new hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Chase CD for twelve months. A one hundred thousand dollar Vibe CD for eleven months. And the interest
Flagstar?
Goes to the Flagstar checking account.
You're going to have one motion referencing all three, so you want to take that motion into each bank?
Um, I usually do separate ones for each bank.
Separate one for each bank, right?
So I have to do one for Vibe to open an account there?
Yes, yeah. All right, yeah.
So then I was like, is that motion number one, motion number two? Okay, so that was my motion number. Okay, so that was my motion number one. That was the two twenty-five Chase CD. Yes.
Maturing in November.
You've got an interview back. Isn't this exciting?
So will we vote on them each one at a time?
We're gonna vote on each one at a time.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could read that back, please.
Okay, made a motion to roll over a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Chase CD maturing in November for how many months?
Well.
Thank you.
So we shouldn't say rollover, the emotion should be. That we, with the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Chase CD. At maturity in November. Okay, we will open a twelve month Chase CD for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twelve month CD. Say the last part again.
For two, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Will open an eleven month Vibe Credit Union CD for a hundred thousand dollars.
A, and a one hundred thousand. See, one hundred thousand dollar CD at Vibe Credit Union for eleven months.
And the remaining interest will go to the Flagstar checking.
Okay, so the only thing I'm kinda missing here is a. I have, you know, that you made the motion, but a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Chase CD at maturity in November. Will be opened. Put into a twelve month CD. At Chase. Twelve month CD in the amount, wait, I got this, I'm so sorry.
One twenty-five of the two twenty-five.
Yeah, I got that. So a twelve month CD in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And a one hundred thousand dollar CD at Vibe Credit Union for eleven months.
Yes.
The remaining interest will go to the Flagstar checking account.
Correct.
Okay, I think I got it.
Okay. Okay, do you wanna read that, Benny?
Yeah, I just have to. Okay. The two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Chase CD and maturity, maturity in November will be used, is that there?
Yes.
That's what I'm missing is a verb.
Okay.
Will be used to open a twelve month CD in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's at Chase, correct? Okay. And a one hundred thousand dollar CD at Vibe Credit Union for eleven months and the remaining interest will go to the Flagstar checking account.
Thank you.
Okay. That was a tricky one.
Oh, in favor, oh wait, Eric, wait a second. On favor?
You made the first motion.
I. Three, yes, well, four, you carry. Now I need to make a motion to open a Vibe Credit Union account, right? So, Rich, I haven't opened an account before, well, I opened, we opened Chase, but we knew we needed to put a hundred thousand dollars into. We put a thousand dollars into the Chase checking account, isn't, because that was the required minimum. Um, I don't know what the required.
So talk to um. So what? So why don't you make a, what, when is then, um, in November is?
November, well.
So one thing that we wanna establish a, a business relation fifty-five and. Um, and so that, to me, there would be, you wanna make that, establish the relationship. Um, pending the funds and then. Consume that relationship with the a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, because what's gonna happen is we'll have Chase take that extra hundred and. A hundred and um, sixteen thousand dollars and they'll put it into the checking accounts. Until we, then, and then we'll do a wire transfer to Vibe. Twelve month.
So, so you'll want to know, you'll want to um, include, you know, who the.
Signers.
Signers are for that.
Okay. So, so I have two things that I wanna put in this motion, um, is opening up that account. I think that we should say that um, with no more than one thousand dollars in funds from a Flagstar check. Cause I think that's all of them, they had like a thousand dollars in the savings account.
If, if we need to establish a, an account aside from the.
We will need to establish, because when that, because here's what happens with, like, the Lake, Lake Michigan Credit Union. Um, actually, in, in, all of them do this, wouldn't, um, except. All the credit unions I know, they actually will roll it into your savings or, so your savings account. And so then you have to go back in and say, okay, now I need you to move it back out. So like Genesis and Lake Michigan both, when they, when it expires, they automatically put it in our savings account.
So.
So Chase and, and Flagstar will roll it over.
When we opened the Genesis, um, we did that concurrent with setting up the CD. Other than having that ahead of time.
Okay, but you had to put money into a CD. You had to, you had to have a savings account open, right?
Um, it's not to open the CD, we had, we opened it concurrent with that.
Okay, okay.
I think it was like five dollars and we.
Okay, alright. Okay, so. So we can say that, alright, I gotta think about.
You have to find out what their requirements are. And maybe make the. Say that, uh, with whatever minimum require, required up to a thousand dollars.
Okay.
And to establish an account.
Alright. So I wanna say, I make a motion to establish a Vibe Credit Union account. With the signers of Jen, Jen Schultz as tre, as president. Gwendolyn Newton as treasurer. And Carrie Francis as trustee. Opening of the, can, of the account. To be concurrent with the opening of the CD. And treasurer.
Signers. I just need your last part, forgive me.
Okay, so um, the account, um.
I got the signers.
The savings account will be open. In concurrence. With the opening of the CD. Or concurrently with the CD. Um. I don't know what their minimum is to open an account. And we're gonna have to have um, a check cut.
So the overall, you're looking, this particular motion is relative to opening a savings account at Vibe Credit Union. Am I getting the gist of this?
Yes, but we have to also list who the, the um, the signers are at that account.
Yes, and I've got that.
And it needs to be opened in concurrence with the CD, the opening of the CD.
So they have a twenty-five dollar minimum.
Thank you.
Was that for a business account, Eric?
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to.
I was just trying, I was just trying to find that too.
Yeah. What can we do to speak this up?
I'm just saying, we've spent forty minutes on this right now.
This is, uh, this is our whole, what our big thing is, is we're financially responsible for the money at the library. So, and we've got three, we've got actually four CDs, we've gotta get through. Okay, so, okay, so what do we wanna, what do we wanna say, um? Read that back to me, please, Carrie.
Gwendolyn Newton made a motion to establish a Vibe Credit Union Savings Account with signers Jennifer Schultz as President, Gwendolyn Newton as Treasurer, and Carrie Francis as Trustee. Concurrently with the new CD.
With the opening of the new CD, um, and then what do we wanna say, um, the account? I don't, I, it, the problem here is with this whole Chase CDs, I don't know how much money we have to have, um, Joe cut a check for.
You're talking about the Vibe CD?
Yeah, we have to open an account there, we have to have Joe cut us a check from the library to Vibe.
I understand that.
We can do that. Alright, let's put in there, let's put in there, the um, the funds for opening an account will come from the Chase. From a Chase wire transfer. We'll open it with a minimum, the minimum amount to open the account.
Come from Chase?
Via Chase wire transfer.
Okay, come, yeah, Chase. And the last part of that. The Chase wire.
Via Chase wire transfer.
And that's where you ended?
Do I need to say for, to open, um, read that back to me, just that last part?
The funds for opening the account will come via, via Chase wire transfer.
The part behind, in front of that, does it say to open the account?
Um, let's see, let's see.
I am sorry that this is taking so long.
In the past, we have. Given the verbiage to the secretary, so it goes for resolve. Because right now, we're, we're switching and we're typing and we're.
Made a motion.
Rates and.
Made a.
The rates are changing every day, Jen, that's the problem.
And that, then I'm asking, why are we voting? And you're worried about.
Because we, because we don't, we won't meet again before November twelfth, that's why.
Okay, made a motion to establish a Vibe Credit Union Savings Account with signers Jen, Glenn. And Carrie concurrently with the new CD, the funds for opening the account will come via Chase Wire Transfer.
That works, okay. Emma, Rich?
Is, is that, uh, the, you need to do anything with the. You keep, you're doing, you've got the. Hundred thousand dollars, you've got the.
That was the motion one.
Yeah, and then you've got the, this, is that all of the funds to?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we should be good?
This is just opening that account. Okay, so I make that motion.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor?
Aye, aye. Okay, the December one should go much quicker. I make a motion for the Genesis. CD maturing on December, in December. To have a hundred thousand dollars going to a seven month CD at Genesis.
One sec. Go into a Genesis CD?
Mm-hmm, for seven months. Interest into the Flagstar checking account.
Oh my goodness.
Okay. Alright, so that was my motion.
Second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye. And my final motion. Is the Flagstar CD maturing in December. Will be rolled over into, in entirety.
Which one is that?
Our Flagstar CD maturing in December.
Just the one you might do a different.
Yes, will be rolled over into um, entirety between six and thirteen months. Depending on interest rate.
Are we gonna have to review this in December or?
The best of.
Be done.
The best deal.
Yeah, I think, I think it's my best interest rate, so that we're clear on the.
Yes.
Motion. Oh yeah, we would assume that we're always do that, but. Wouldn't, I think it was arbitrary.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Eric, can you?
What did you write?
Best available interest rate.
But it stays at Flagstar because of the.
Yes.
Dollar limits?
Yes.
Okay. So even if another bank has a better rate, we're gonna stay.
We're not moving it.
Staying at Flagstar.
Because the only other banks that we could use, as we discussed earlier, would be Chase, because of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, they both consider us as a government entity and nobody else does, and we work camping every place else.
We could do Vibe.
We'd be way over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're already putting a hundred thousand dollars in Vibe.
Oh, I thought you said this one was a hundred and twenty-five.
No, this is two hundred and four thousand, this is gonna be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by the time.
The interest isn't.
Yes, that's why we said we're gonna roll it over to Flagstar. You do, okay.
Okay. Motion to roll over the Flagstar CD maturing in December in its entirety to a CD between six and thirteen months based on best available interest rates.
At Flagstar.
At Flagstar, thank you.
One second.
Thank you. And I'm done.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna say there's no report from the Strategic Planning Committee, because we haven't met since June. No, as long as you don't have any questions, I mean, what's in your packet? A lot of it's reiterated.
Uh, Policy Committee, we did not meet, so I'll do a report.
Okay. So we want to this, to building ready. Here we go. So we do, we did meet.
Yeah.
So following up, uh. Uh, last meeting, uh. We already talked about that, the, uh, well, we already accepted the. Uh, both from three sixty. Uh, paid and. The, uh, that work has begun as, as mentioned earlier. Uh, with the painting of the strength. Um. On the. Building assessment sheet, so we're building assessment sheet, we're looking at. What's the maintenance and what is the replacement value or cost? Would be in today dollars. Um, we had to replace the HVAC system, we had to replace some of their. Uh, their, um, conversation with Aaron Phillips, uh, that we don't feel like we needed to do that. But yeah, but we could get the replacements costs for the HVAC. And. Um. But he cautioned against using, uh. Um. The vendors will, that sounds. Uh, there, uh, we're not leaning forward on the, um. Uh, after hours. Full lockers, um. Um, cost higher than you expected, uh, same money, thousand dollars.
For the trucous down here? Wow.
Well, did it turn out that it's not even wide enough? For the lockers that we were looking at? We would have to put them outside, um, so we could put them outside, it's just that it, it was a very high, so we wanna. Keep looking, maybe put it off for a couple of years.
Okay, okay.
Um. Digital sign, um, it's in the, um. Budget for next year, um. There's a, a new issue with the one square, uh. Prepare for the six hundred and seventy-five, but you know, scheduling. And, um, with the donor tree, uh, we're getting, um, and also for the dedicated plaque, we're basing later. Um. We provide details. Um, updates and another lock up. And of an update on the. HVAC, um, issues, the, um, the not there exhaust fan, uh, the, the blazeless fan, I imagine we call it, or something, uh. The, uh, Aaron, uh, felt that. It, he thinks it looks like it was, uh, he does not think it looks like it was never installed. But he finds it odd, and he was contacting the original installer. Um. Their, their cost of the exhaust fan is about six hundred dollars plus labor, so thousand dollars maybe.
Yeah.
Um. And we already mentioned that. There was some heat issues and we're. Um. There's some, but there's also something wrong with the touchscreen that we're gonna look into.
On the boiler.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just to update you on the exhaust fan, uh, Aaron did reach out to the original installer of the HVAC, and of course. They say that they installed it, so. No surprise there.
Yeah.
No surprise there. Um, yeah, so.
Aaron being the old construction manager.
Right, yeah, yeah. He's, he's gonna be our neighbor for quite a while and the construction trailer.
I saw his name on there.
They're not including a, um. Like a bathroom, so I. I was watching the township meeting and I saw that, so quickly, you know, that welcome use our bathrooms. There they are. And they're doing construction? No, Aaron and he. Oh, okay. I thought you meant all the construction workers. No. Okay.
I think that's it on the building committee.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, we've got new business on the Friends memorandum, are we just reading it?
Yeah, so let me draw your attention, so at the Friends annual, um, meeting, they reviewed the memorandum, heard standing memorandum of. Uh, understanding, otherwise known as the rules, uh, they just had one change that they. Approved on their end and are asking you to approve, which is gonna be bullet point number. Bullet point number five, it had previously said, um. The library agrees to supply friends with a wish list that indicates the anticipated needs for friends support, the friends agree to present. Uh, their wish list by the August library, uh, board meeting, if they would like to change that to on a quarterly basis. Well, I do agree with this, it would be much, um, as we start to provide them ideas, uh, and they had their own ideas, and, and of course. Anytime you as a board have ideas, obviously they can come at any time, so it's, this is nice, they have their quarterly meetings, it's a great way for them to say. Um, this is what we would like to see, um. On next year's wish list, or even, um, under new ideas, but, um, yeah, so that's what they wanna add, and, uh, they are seeking your, uh, approval.
I like that, because then, you know, if something comes up, that wasn't discussed in August, it can't be discussed. For the basis.
I think it's a much better way to do it.
And of course, we would re-sign, so, uh, once this was approved.
Okay, so you wanna.
Signing, this is, is, uh, whoever the secretary is.
That's correct.
Okay. Whoever that may be. In November.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really wanna make a motion to.
To accept the change?
Yeah, okay, who's making it?
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I said it. Okay.
Good balance.
Um, I'll just say a few words on this one, um, and a friend. Step in, uh, finance committee when you, when you want to, uh, so we brought this to you back, um, I believe in June, and. We, there was a number of questions that came up, one from, um, the auditor and just a few things that we wanted to look over, and so we've since. Received new information on this, so, um, one of the changes that the auditor was looking was to have, um. And you'll see it highlighted there, uh, where it says paragraph, uh, the very first paragraph under purpose, it's number one, two, three, the third paragraph down right before the bullet points. Uh, it does state the fund balance can be used for purposes approved by the board of trustees, but adding in there as recommended by the director is kind of what. Completes the full picture of how we currently do it, and I, and what the auditor was looking for, um, so we're looking to add that to it. Um, the other thing that, uh, after looking at this, we want to add in is. That operational needs would really be for emergency purposes, so provide emergency, so adding that word emergency in there, um, that is. Uh, we don't normally want to use it for operational needs, so just kind of delineating that, um, in that statement. Uh. That next change that you'll see highlighted. To your right, um, that was just the last bullet point that stated maintain investment grade bond ratings, um, and that is not, um. That is not appropriate for us. Um, on page two, the other change.
The, um.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that makes the bullet before the relation. Uh, with an and.
So take out the and.
And, and, yeah, I replace, so the semi-colon. Become, becomes a period.
Okay.
And the and goes out.
And then on page two. Under that last. Solid bullet point on under unassigned, it previously had the word cooperative, and that is not us, so it's just a slight change to. The bridge. This came directly from the attorney, so it was probably. Yes. Does finance committee have anything to add? You're not. Okay, then let's get a motion on the table.
I make a motion to accept the fund balance policy as changed.
And I'm second it. Thank you.
He can adjourn the meeting. And he still has his report.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, I said it.
We got it done.
Okay. So Rich, you wanted to grab the glory of the last item on the agenda?
Between you and the exit. He holds the power. Um, so. Some. Some thoughts. And highlights. Here. Hold on, if you got a copy of one of.
Thank you.
Hope we could pass that one.
Yes.
He's always good at this stuff. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. If you wanna put these in minutes, I think that's fine. Stay good. Catch a copy with a minute.
Okay. I brought the right number. I was by accident. Okay, so I'm basically, I'm just gonna leave this, um, so I put my, uh. Some thoughts together about. My, my time on the board. And, um, I'm gonna share that first and foremost, I'm. I'm a library patron, and I like the word patron. It's a, uh. A word that has a lot of, uh. Connection with arts, with creating, presenting, really supporting and preserving all of the arts, including. The Arts of Letters, which is. Uh. Basically our collection. For us, as patron, I was a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, two thousand and eight. That committee with great input from the White Lake. Community and guidance from our library consultants, the vision and mission we still follow. And I really, I really like a, a vision, uh, that felt at the time of inspiration through information, really, I think speaks, speaks to me, and it. It can speaks to our constituents as well, um. There, uh. And we've followed, or, you know, they organized the, um, the community needs into actionable strategies, created a, a plan that. Guided for several years, um, I was reported to the board in two thousand and nine, sworn in in two thousand and ten, January two thousand and ten. And then ran for election with an incomplete term in, uh, November twenty-ten, and then re-elected three times, and. During my tenure, I and other board members advocated to, for continuing to work. From an, uh, update irrelevant. Uh, strategic plan based on in the mall segments of the community. The clear need exposed in various plans was need for space, which led to. Uh, really needing to, with the, for the voters, uh, a, uh, a new building. Um, and, uh. The result of that is this building, uh, which we've, uh, been operating out of for the. Uh, over five years, um, one early hi- highlight for me was writing a letter. At, uh, White Lake Township Library in two thousand and sixty-two for inclusion. The White Lake Township Time Capsule buried in White Lake Cemetery in two thousand and thirteen. A then current board signed the letter. Included expecta- an expectation that bound paper books would continue to be a significant part of the collection, but other forms. Including the then new ebooks would be more prevalent. Um. There, at that point, we didn't. You know, have ebooks to, uh, really the, the idea of lending in works was just beginning to be, uh. Explored, uh, and now. It's, you know, a big portion and, uh, you know, of what we. What people want there, and, and also the, you know, along with that, the bidding, the audio books, uh. That we can lend over the net, you know, it wasn't. We still had some tapes back then. Books on tape, uh. There, um, so if you read that letter and, and the Time Capsule, I don't think I can make that day. Uh, but it opened in twenties.
You don't think you're gonna make that day?
I'm not planning, yeah.
I'm planning to be there.
I think I'm busy there, perhaps somebody, uh, during my term of office, I've been in each of the, the, um. Board offices, Vice President, President, Secretary, and Treasurer, currently Vice President. Um, I've served with some of the finest people I know, guiding the library in accordance with their oath. Mission law and sound library principles, I'm thankful for the board members I have served with, and particularly the current board members, Jennifer. Has been an example of an engaged board member. Jennifer and former board president Glenn Rosso, both went above and beyond call of duty throughout the process of building the library. Um.
Thank you, Ruth.
Been on the board longer than I, which, you know, was.
Not by much.
Not by much.
I think I was in an O eight, I mean, I was. I was on the board when you were the patron, when we were doing the vision.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh-huh.
Um. Karen, our current secretary, and who's also, um. Leaving the board at this time, um, who's brought up. As our current secretary's brought joy and deep sense of, of missions, uh, to the board, um, I really appreciated her. Um, military, uh. Experience and, and service, um, it's been a, really a well-spreading of, of, uh. Ideas and, and enthusiasm there. Glenn. Our current treasurer, but innovative and decisive, mostly, uh. I wrote this before we did that, I was thinking, uh. It's strengthening our financial position advocating for the library in the community.
Thank you, Rich.
And Eric, uh, the current trustee is, brings a unique perspective as a library insider. Having worked with libraries across Midwest for the publication and service provider side. And Carrie, uh. Current trustee, an acting secretary, um, is a, uh.
Thank you.
Uh, library enthusiast, uh, has experienced nonprofit and public sectors, is a great guide, um. I have, um. A great expectation for the, the board, um, success in, in going forward there, and, um, we all make a great foundation. Uh, during my tenure, uh, I've served with three library directors, Larry Ostrowski, Denise Stefanic, and April Stevenson. Um, each had brought unique strengths and skills to leading the library. I'm thankful to each for your leadership, dedication, passion for the library. And our community, I'm, I'm also thankful for the, the library staff. Past, present, and future, and the friends of the library as well, um, all together, it's a really a great community. I'm thankful for the friends, associates, and White Lake citizens for their support of the library. I'm thankful for my family, our daughter Laurel volunteers, uh, at the library as a teenager, um, which is thought that this might be a career for her, she was. A sophomore in high school, um. Uh, she came. She was volunteering on a Sa- Saturday and came home and said, Dad, you have to. Go talk to Larry about an opening on the board. And, uh, here I am, uh, a side note, she does have her MLIS degree, I mean, graduate certificate in the archives. And is currently working at Milford Library. Our, uh. Our son Patrick and daughter Kate, and actually Laurel pretty much too, lifelong library and film books. Um, most of all, my wife Sandy, who's put up with. And sometimes even supports. My volunteerism, um.
Which is wide.
It is wide, so I, uh, I know the library is in good hands with the, the people at the table, and the people in the chairs. And, and the staff here and the, the citizens of, of White Lake, uh, only good things looking forward. So no motions?
No motions.
Uh, except. Except I would offer a, a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
At. Who's got the time, eight eighteen?
Second.
Okie doke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.